Welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled public meeting of Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, November 28, 2023. Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session on November 15, 2023, prior to tonight's meeting on stuff matters of personal personnel and leadership. First up, have a recognition for community members. And that recognition is for Corey Jones, for her service volunteering for Lower Gwinnett and to help write the history of Penland. Not going to take that. Free history of Corey Jones, she is the eldest child of Joseph and Hattie Stewart, seven children. She grew up in Penland Village and her family has lived there for over 130 years. She's the author of the book Penland Village, Let's We Forget, history of an African American village in Lower Gwinnett Township in Montgomery. Lower Gwinnett Township in Montgomery County. She's married, she was married to the Lathan Johnson and has two sons. She said she believes that everyone should be aware of what is happening in the community and that there are many ways that everyday citizens can help our elected officials keep our community safe. And no one's working on what is not. She attended the Penland Elementary School and graduated from Ambler High School, which is now a second high school, and she received a diploma in nursing from Philadelphia General Hospital of nursing, a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Westchester State University, and a Master of Arts from McDavid University. In addition, she received a Masters of Science in Nursing from Gwinnett Mercy College. She's received additional training in group therapy, group dynamics, human relations, and stress management. She's been a nurse educator for over 40 years, a retired tenured professor from Gwinnett Mercy College Nursing School. And she also served on the faculty of the Close Montgomery Hospital, Chestnut Hill Hospital, and Germantown Hospital School of Nursing. She's had a varied career in nursing and she's been Woods Staff Nurse in California, Emergency Nurse in Chester County, and a supervisor in two mental health hospitals. Also developed a program for the assessment and education of the Health Technology Institute of Philadelphia for students wanting to work in the health field. She's received numerous honors and recognition too long for me to list, as well as community service awards through Penland Civic Association and then Woods Board of Directors. She was Vice President of the Executive Board of Turning Point and member of the Community Advisory and Health. She's a member of the Church of Messiah of Gwinnett Valley, and again, like I mentioned earlier, she did write and produce a publication about Penland Village, Let's We Forget. Corey Jones' history and contribution to Lower Gwinnett can't be extended or even explained in a biography or through the words that I'm sharing. We are grateful that she lives in our community. We are exceptionally happy that she's willing to share her efforts and her volunteerism with Lower Gwinnett Township. And I'm honored tonight to honor her.
Well, this is a surprise. I thank you so very much for this honor. And I know you've all heard many times, just a little bit helps. And that's what volunteerism is all about. And in Lower Gwinnett, there are many opportunities for you to do this. And I want to, I am thankful for that opportunity. You have an opportunity to meet the leaders in your community. You have an opportunity to see the needs of your community. And above all, you have the means to meet your neighbors. And that was one of the most important things for me is to meet my many neighbors. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment on any items not on the agenda. Are there any comments on any items not on the agenda? Enough. I am going to turn it back over to our solicitor to open the public.
Thank you. We will go on the record. This is a continuation of a public hearing that commenced on November 14, 2023. The purpose of the hearing is to consider whether an amendment to the existing conservation easement for Penland Woods should be approved to allow construction of a cell phone tower and related equipment. It was announced at the conclusion of the November 14 hearing that the meeting would continue this evening to allow Mr. Malloy to present whatever information he wants to present in response to questions regarding environmental issues. I should also announce that again, Mr. Torsky has recused himself from participation in this hearing, including deliberation and any potential vote. So with that in mind, I turn it over to Mr. Malloy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solicitor, and good evening to the Board of Supervisors and Township staff. My name is Michael Malloy. I'm an attorney with Obermeyer Redmond Maxwell Hippel, and I represent Rise Up Towers, which, just to bring you back, has approached the township about two different towers, of one of which is in Penland Woods Park that we're here to talk about tonight. And last we spoke, Ms. McNeely had brought up concerns about environmental issues that I was unable to satisfactorily address and said that I would bring back my environmental expert. And so tonight I have Ryan McKissick with me, and Ryan's from EBI. The question, if I believe, just to sort of frame things, I'm going to ask Ryan to give us a little background about him, what he does, what EBI is. And then I'm going to ask him to give us a summary of the different environmental studies that are done in conjunction with the construction of a cell tower, which is, by the way, again, being constructed in a place that has already been disturbed and developed with a maintenance area. No trees, no other plant life will be disturbed in its construction. So I'm going to ask Ryan to comment generally about that, and then I'll open him up to questions. Okay? So Ryan, go ahead. I think we'll need to swear him in. Okay?
Thank you. Yes. Does work. Thanks for having me. I don't get to talk about my job that much in front of people. I work for EBI Consulting. We're a telecom environmental consultant. Primarily, we work with Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile. I've been with tower companies such as Rise Up. I've been with the firm for almost 18, 19 years. I don't know if I look that old or not, but I have been probably seeing the development of 500 cellphone towers nationwide. I am not personally directly involved with Rise Up. My colleagues are. I'm here just to, as a courtesy, because they are a client of EBI, but right now I probably have 50 to 100 cellphone towers under my management throughout Pennsylvania, California, Texas. Very familiar with the process, mainly on a federal and state level is what we deal with. Locally, when it comes to zoning and things like that, a lot of times people like to bring us in after everything is buttoned up with that because that is locally, it's, you know, we see, this is why we're here, because that is where things happen that before we get involved. But where we do get involved is what is required for FCC, federal levels, state levels, things of that, that. We do, the primary report we do, it's a NEPA report, National Environmental Policy Act, getting all the FCC and federal clearances. So for, for example, for Pennsylvania, you have state natural resource clearances you have to get.
Ryan, take a step back for a second and describe to the board what that clearance is. What is a clearance? When you say you're going through these clearances?
So in the state of Pennsylvania, we'll start with natural resources, natural resources, flood zones, wetlands, species, threatened and endangered species on the federal level and the state level. In Pennsylvania, there is a system you have to go through in which four or five state agencies have a say in as well as the Pennsylvania branch of the federal fish and wildlife. So there's, there's the federal level and the state level. And sometimes we'll do a screen.
Yep. And what happens? You submit the application to them?
We submit the information to them. And then each state agency has a right to come back and say, we need more information. Because what, what we initially set is kind of a baseline. This is what's going on. This is the what, the where, the when. And some of them say, you're good. And then someone will say, nope, we need, we need more. We need your full consultation packet. We submit a full consultation packet to them.
What, what is a, give us an example of a reason why they might need more information?
Tree removal is big. The tree removal is big. There's a lot of forest land in Pennsylvania. There was recently a new endangered species added to federal, it's within Pennsylvania. So.
What is that?
It's the Indiana bat.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. So it's caused a lot of headaches because wherever you add, very rarely does a new species get added to the federal endangered species list. But the big thing with that is tree clearing. So if tree clearing in those areas, you'll get tree clearing restrictions. They'll say you can build your cellphone tower, but it has to be, you want to cut down trees. It's got to be from October to April, something along those lines. Yeah, if I'm speaking too fastly, please, you know, let me know. And then for the agencies that require the full packet, we submit the full packet and you get usually within 30 to 45 days, you hear back from the agency. A lot of times they will clear it, maybe with a contingency, you know, something along, you know, tree clearing restrictions or things of that nature.
That's, so sometimes if they, if there's, is an issue, they'll give you a mitigation strategy?
Yeah, mitigation's popular when there's an issue in the business, in the, you know, for a site.
And so you did, I know you said you don't work directly with Rise Up, but you did take a look at the site, right?
Yes, and I'm familiar with the land.
Yeah, because your kids play ball there.
Yeah, my son has played lacrosse there, so.
So just generally speaking, I, you know, as I said, this is a piece of property, it's a portion of a piece of property that's already been disturbed and developed. In your experience, when that happens, are there usually any problems or, I mean, I'm just generally hypothetically?
More than likely, no, on a previously disturbed land, especially whenever the, all the access drives are there already, there's drive up. There's no tree clearing involved. It's, the land's already been graded. So anything to that regard that's been done, more than likely, you would, from a natural resource standpoint, you would get. Unless there's, and I, I guess, we haven't been engaged to investigate the site fully yet. We're not being paid for this at all at this point. So. But just on my opinion, on the, you know, the property, it would probably get instant clearance, you know, after the initial submittal from a natural resource.
Instant clearance.
Instant, yeah, I think. And that's just from the natural resource side. A NEPA report has seven or eight layers that you have to get clearances through, but that's just from that angle.
So that's all I have. I see Ms. McNeely's maybe got some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So I'm, I'm still not understanding what it is that you're filling out on all these papers. What is it that you go investigate, if you do, when you carry out an environmental evaluation to make sure the installation of the cell tower is not going to impact negatively on our resource, our environment in Penland Woods?
Sure. We could start with just the natural resource element, which I was discussing. The first thing we would do is we, and we have biologists on staff, so we have certified biologists on staff that know the ins and outs of these species, the land that these species occupy, the various grasses and scrubs and bushes and trees. And we do, we send people to the site. We do an assessment of the site, assessment of the access to the site, assessment of the plans of what is going to be disturbed. We then run, you know, threatening these, excuse me, threatened endangered species lists. We compare them with the, you know, what could be there, what is documented to be there compared to what the site, the aspects, the elements of the site are. And then we submit, you know, our package and we come up with a determination which we then submit to the agency and the agency can concur with our determination. Or they can, you know, say, hey, we don't and we want, you know, this, we believe this XYZ. Normally, the determinations would be a, like a no effect, like no effect at all. A may affect, but not adversely affect, meaning, hey, there could be something here, but what you're doing may affect that, but will not adversely affect it. And that in the NEPA language is adversely affect is it's critical to what, when it goes to natural resources, with wetlands, with historic resources, things of that nature. But there would be a time if we said, hey, this is, this is going to adversely affect this species. Normally, before we would even submit to the agency, we would contact our client and say, hey, just so you know, we're going to, you know, this is what we have found and you may want to do something else. But, but because if we submit this, it's going to open up, you know, a whole can of worms, so.
Okay. And so this is an evaluation you do after we vote to proceed?
No, today we're just voting to amend conservation easement. We're not at the point where we're actually voting on the.
I, I know, but I'm trying to understand.
Yes, we're not going to undertake a $10,000 environmental study on the site until the township says that we can build a tower there because it's just, it's, it's, it's just not.
Okay.
Yeah. And what will happen is once we do, sorry, I should stand. I'm sorry. Once we do do the test and it goes through, you know, the evaluations, if something does come up that prevents the tower or is going to you know, somehow adversely affect the environment, that's on us. That's risk that we took to undertake this whole process, the legal fees, the the studies, the, you know, the engineering, everything else, and we'll, we'll lose out. But the study is going to ultimately reveal, you know, whether we can or can't do the tower in the same, in that location.
Okay. All right. So I appreciate very much your coming tonight and explaining the process and giving me some idea that we will, we'll find out if there's going to be negative impacts as we go along, so.
Yes, we're normally, it's the way they're handling this is proper, whereas a lot of times you'll have a, you know, Verizon tries to build 1,000 sites at once and they do all this stuff before they even get any sort of zoning approval. So there's been plenty of times we are engaged for work long before and any approvals and those sites never come to be. But, you know. And a lot of times what they will do, if there's if the state or Fed have any hangup, usually the state, they will defer to a local agency. If, if, for example, if they had any mitigating needs or things like that. So. Is there any other questions?
Thank you, Ryan.
I have two questions.
Sorry, apologies.
Have you or your company ever been involved with a tower being located within a park or government owned open space?
I'm sure. We've, I mean, we've been, I, I've done multiple projects on municipal land. My company's done thousands, if not tens of thousands of towers. So I would confidently say yes, and I can, even without thinking of one on the top of my head.
And would it be fair to say that this tower would be a compatible use for this particular property and would not negatively affect the recreation areas on the property?
From what I saw, the plans, I would say that, yes, that's in line. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board? Anything in the public?
Yeah, the board could at this time, if there are no further questions, I assume you have no further witnesses?
No further witnesses. Thank you very much.
The board, if it's so desired, could take a vote this evening or could vote to reserve a decision until a subsequent meeting?
We have, of course, the consideration of the First Amendment to voluntary, the voluntary declaration of a conservation easement. This First Amendment was included in our board packet and over. Board packet, uh, we're going to have the 14th board packet. I'd like to make a motion. With that, the First Amendment to the Voluntary Declaration of Conservation, Conservation Easement, Conservation Easement, there is a, there's a second.
Again.
All those in favor?
Hi, I'm.
Thank you. Record is closed.
Next up, we have general business, the discussion around our 2024 township priorities and work plan. Over to our township manager.
Jamie, can you open up the link from the packet?
So the staff has completed at least most of the, just about all of the work for the 2024 budget. And as we put that together, we are essentially putting together our work plan for 2024 as well. And so what you see before you, we want to make sure that the projects and initiatives that we're working on are what the board want us to be working on. So we're all, you know, on the same page, marching to the beat of the same drum, whichever metaphor you'd like. Make sure we're not missing anything significant, not doing something you're surprised about. Make sure you're just up, up to speed on where we're at. There's a lot going on here, though. So we've been struggling, been working on this off and on really for much of the past year, trying to figure out a way to distill it. And so we have a new project manager this year, and I asked the project manager to have a really weird project and figure out how to put this all on one page, and he found it. This is called a tree map. So, so partly we wanted to show you the tool because I think this could be effective way to, we can keep refining this. This is kind of a first draft of what we're doing. We can drill down in a lot of ways. We want to show you the tool. But also have you take a look, at least a, you know, first pass that this is what we're doing in 2024. We can keep, if you like this format, we can keep working on it and, and come back with you, you know, each quarter, twice a year or something. This is what we're completed. And this is what we now think are the priorities we should be working on. Is that correct? Something like that, some kind of process. So John, would you mind at least walking the board through how the tree map works?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So the idea behind the tree map, kind of like Mimi said, you can see a lot of information at one time. There's also a lot of flexibility in terms of how we customize the view. So Jamie, if you wouldn't mind being my hands on this one. The first three ways that we can organize this information, you see from the colors, are to look at when the project is intended to happen. So now being something that's going on now, carry into the next year, next being early 24, future being the later half of 24. And Jamie, if you would click on any one of those words, the word now, next, or future at the top there, what happens is it'll basically zoom in and give you just that view. So you can see everything that's happening now. We also then have a second way of filtering this by the categories that we created across the top of the administrative efficiency, community outreach and planning, things like that. So Jamie, would you pick any one of those at the top and go ahead and click on it? And we can keep refining down like this and we can kind of drill in with this. So this is a way to really change these views to kind of isolate what you want to look at. And Jamie, if you click that up arrow that's in the right side of the green, you'll see that if you leave it on service enhancements, now you'll see all service enhancements for the three time periods. So the idea is we have at least these two filtering criteria, and then if we wanted to, we could also wind up changing the size of the boxes to a corresponding number. So if you wanted to say this project is going to be bigger because it costs more, we can make it proportionate in that way as well. We tried to keep them pretty even just to display everything right now, but there's a lot of flexibility in this tool. As we've talked about this in-house before presenting it tonight, we've also, of course, come up with the idea of having something that says a completed category or something like that as well, so that we can kind of watch the progress through the year as we do that. So the idea is that if this is something that's good and readable to you, A, we can manipulate it pretty easily. B, there's a lot of flexibility and C, we can make this available to the public, both as an image and we can make an interactive page like this available to the public as well. So lots of options and we're looking for any more feedback. Thank you.
Well, I think it's an awesome tool. Thank you for putting this together. It makes, it's, the information is very readable, understandable. I like the colors. I like how we can filter it by priorities and categories. And I agree, I think it would make sense to make this available to the public so they can sort of see everything going on. Cause a lot of times you don't really realize all of the work that staff is doing on a daily basis. You know, if you see your roads not paved or whatever, you might be complaining about that, not realizing that there's so many other things going on. So I think that this is a really good tool. Do you have some comments on the substance?
Good.
As you are. I can't help myself.
That's the point.
And I think you'll all be surprised to hear that I would like to see not necessarily in the green category, but maybe in the red, that we are looking for grant opportunities for at least one of the parks now that we have the strategic plans. My, my thought, if we're, I mean, I think the parks and rec and staff are going to weigh in on prioritizing the different projects. But given the importance of replacing playground equipment, pickleball courts and environmental initiatives that we've taught, identified in those plans, I think Pen Ambler Park is sort of right for choice number one, but, but. That's Penland and Penland Woods Park. Yeah, that's was, yeah. I, I was thinking more like the larger. Well, this isn't, this is advancing, this isn't chasing grant opportunities for Pen Ambler Oxford.
So we, we do, we have the seek the, the grant for Ingersoll Park improvements under now. And so one thing, there, there is kind of a cryptic, partly to be able to show you this, this first time you see it, not to have quite so many projects. I did go in and consolidate a few things, just so there aren't as many. So there's one that is now build out phasing and funding plan for capital projects.
Okay.
And the idea, not just for parks, but for every, like there are park grants that are going to be due in April.
Right.
So that, which is why this isn't now, like we got to figure out exactly, you know, what are, what's the sequencing that we want to do for the parks as well as some other things. So as grant opportunities come up in 2024, we are prepared for that.
Okay.
And that, it's kind of why I do see, especially as we get used to this, I, I think there's a lot we can do in drilling down with this tool so that you could click on that box, right? And it could, it could go to.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have that right now, but.
Sure. Okay. That's good. I just didn't want to miss, I know that these parks grants, there's a lot of money available and they come up every year. And so I didn't want to sort of miss an opportunity when we did all that work on the strategic plan. So I'm glad that that's, that that is a priority.
Yeah. Can, can, so I, I really appreciate this and I, and I, like Janine, have some individual concerns about items, but is there some way that we can like encode things that need a grant or some re, you know, some way to indicate resources? Would that be on the drilling down part, I guess? Would that be on the drilling down part, I guess. Uh, I, when I look at a map like this, a strategic plan like this, I like to see timelines and resources. Um, but you know, maybe that's industry, RMA industry standard, but, um, I think in terms of getting an over a bird's eye view or high level view of what projects are being worked on, this is really good.
That's where, you know, I didn't want to spend too much time if this wasn't going to be a useful to tool for you. Um, although I think as we're kind of getting used to it with the staff, we're all agreeing it's, it could be a useful tool just internally as well. Um, but I, so it, yeah, at this point it's pretty two dimensional, but we can have that. So where there's more information, the description of the project. This is a three year project. This is a six month project. This is a $20,000 project. This is all in kind. It's all staff time. You know, we can have different categories that we sort of fill in for them.
Yeah. When you have, um, it, it gives me a better vis- visualization because you're always saying to me, Tessie, we're full. We don't have capacity for something else, which I'm, that's not a criticism. I'm appreciate your comment. But it helps me to understand what resources are needed, uh, for each of these things. Um, so that I, I can say, you know, oh, this is taking five of our public works people and this thing needs to have a grant written. You know, within the next month, who's going to be doing that? Um, well, the only sort of concern and maybe it's folded in other categories would be environmental work. Um, so we, um, you know, we, we have a lot going on our plate. Um, in that area. So I would like to see, I guess more of that called out in this list.
And what would be like a project or an initiative that you'd want to see here specifically?
Well, I'd like to see, uh, so we're going to have a joint meeting with the EAC in January. I was hoping it would be before now so we could have things on this list, but you know, like, uh, in a, um, energy evaluation of the township building, if we're going to put a new roof on it. Do we need to take into consideration anything else to tighten up the building? Or can we consider solar panels to go on the roof or, you know, something like that? Um, that's just something off the top of my head, but there are, um, uh, other additional environmental, um, ideas, I guess, that, that may be coming up, uh, after we have our joint meeting.
And I think, you know, that's, this is definitely, it's not intended to be, we don't look at this again for a year. Um, but it is also intended to be something that hopefully we can keep discussing with the full board. Um, and I will fully admit that I am, um, you know, coming back to that same theme. We have a lot going on. So when the board, you know, kind of regular things, we, we can just smaller things we can schedule. It may not be something we can handle tomorrow, but we can just get it in bigger projects. I, I want to make sure you all have a good understanding of what we're already spending our time on so that you can help us figure out, it isn't, bringing in a new project doesn't necessarily mean that something else can't happen. It may mean that something else has to be delayed. So let's just make sure we all are, you know, again, on the same page of if we do this, is everyone all right? If this then gets backburnered for a bit because we're just i- i- and some of it is, is, you know, we're, there's only so many hours in the day and how much can we handle? I also get concerned when we're doing too many different things that we're not going to do them well. That's how mistakes get made. I think in the end we could get a little bit more done, a little bit quicker. If we just plan it out and that's some, I think that can also be easier if you all and the staff as well. I mean, this is true for everybody within the different departments can see. This is on our rate. Like that's where I think it's helpful. We can get more detail in here. So you can see, yep, we're going to apply for that park grant.
Right.
It's not in January, it's in April. So in January, we're doing this and this, you know, like that's what I kind of hope as we build that out, that that gets a little bit clearer.
Yeah, I think this is great.
I just want to, so like now, and I think to like put everything into perspective, then now things are actively going on right now. Like we're actively engaging in all of these activities currently. The next are things that are on our radar, but we might not be as active in the engagement. Is that accurate?
Or it's, or we feel like it's about to start, like they're the next things on the list. They've been teed up a little bit, you know.
Just going to highlight the Houston Creek flood mitigation project, understanding that, you know, we did that study and got that grant over a year ago, and that we do have next steps planned. So in the now part, is it, is it plausible? Again, thank you for this, John. I think this is awesome. But if we could start to input the information so that people had a better awareness of where we are and the processes. And I think if this is available to the public, it gives transparency so that when people have questions or concerns about, did we forget about this? No, we didn't, but here's where we are. We applied for a grant. We're working on that, that. So it's easily accessible to the public at large and to the supervisors. So they have an idea of where we are. And if they have questions, then, you know, what's the next step after we can kind of update them?
Yep. Yeah, we, uh, cause some of what we can add, sometimes stuff might be in the next because we've applied for the grant and nothing's happening, right? Sometimes it may be in the next, just because, you know, there's, there's three other projects that have grant deadlines and they just need to get done first. So we might not have to have that much detail, but like, you know, this project starts at when, you know, this one and this one are substantially complete in construction or something like that. That's just a little bit of tied to the completion of these other projects.
I think this is awesome. I think it gives the public a lot of information related to what we're doing now. And maybe they would not have known, it targeted this in a newsletter, which is not exciting to talk about. But these are the things that we're actively engaged in right now and they're, they're in some form of progress moving forward. Sharing that information and then being able to update it, I think is, so thank you. Are any additional questions from the board or the public?
I just have one. What, what is the meaning of plan for ship redevelopment?
Oh, ship house innovation park redevelopment. It's a good reminder not to use acronyms.
So what?
You often know what that means.
Yeah. Well, I know what ship is, but what, what is our involvement in their, in their campus, um, composition or redevelopment or whatever it is?
That it, that has definitely slowed down. I mean, as you know, they had approached the township quite a while ago, um, with asking for discussion about a zoning ordinance amendment. They, they've sort of backed off that a little bit, but our understanding is they still have plans for additional buildings at, on the campus and potentially would still want a zoning ordinance amendment. So we've talked in the building and zoning committee about, um, whether the township should consider being a little bit more proactive in that planning process instead of sitting back and waiting for Beacon Capital, the owner of ship to come to the township saying, we want these changes to the zoning ordinance. We could do a little bit more homework ourselves in putting together, these may be changes we want to consider, the board would want to consider to the zoning ordinance, because this is the kind of development that you want. Then with input from, from Beacon, they're the property owner. You don't want to impose something that would be impossible because they may have wonderful plans that the board would want to be able to support. But you're not just reacting then, it's just giving some thought to what maybe master plan requirements or some, you know, a- additional um, regulations that you'd want to have to guide the development in a certain direction. So that's all just still discussion points right now, but those discussions are happening through building and zoning.
Okay.
But it's again, that's why it's good, you know, we could kind of show these things just to make sure if there's stuff that we haven't talked about for a while, because it's not exactly right for a board decision. We can make sure the whole board is at least aware at, at a high level, what's going on.
Is it, is it something that you could, we could kind of meet with like quarterly or is this kind of review?
Definitely. And, and it's easy, as easy as, you know, Jamie clicking around and, um, updating it is, is essentially a spreadsheet behind it.
Yeah, like upgrade open door pump station. I don't know that I've seen anything about that before. So going through this, uh, a little bit more detail would be useful.
So how about, so this one, I just want to at least introduce the idea to you. So how about if we now staff works on a little bit more so we can drill it down? And then maybe we can bring it back second, end of January or something and spend a little bit more time on some of the sections. Sound right? I also really want to thank Jen O'Brien who worked with John. She's actually the one who, who first started putting this together in the software we had in the tree map. So she really very instrumental in making this happen.
This is existing software, huh?
It is. Yeah, that we have.
Thank you, Jen.
No trees were harmed in the making of this tree map.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public? Hi. Next up, we have resolution 202326 for local town grant application for control and penman signal. We have a memo included in our board packet. Um, staff prepares to application for submission to the department of community and economic development or CCEV. statewide local share account grant program. The first application is for Penland. Control Avenue Traffic Signal Modernization Improvement is requesting grant funding in the amount of $151, $151,000, um, to complete the construction of improvements, the existing signalization and the interception to approve access and connection between the residential areas. Um, the project total is, is over 704,000. The project, the township has posted a match commitment of 20% for each application. Resolution before the board request authorization to submit the grant applications and to authorize the township manager and the assistant township manager to execute the grant document. Are there any questions from the board? Who did this? Is the actual resolution? Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Being that I'd like to make a motion to approve the LSA, um, application for 20232627 for the grant application submission for the Pennant site. Control Avenue Traffic Signal Modernization. There's second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, the next up is, uh, the grant application for, um, statewide local share account. Again, this is in excess of $704,000 for the public financing authority. Used for Ingersoll Park improvement located in Norwood Township. Um, this is this is in totality for the improvements for the Ingersoll Park. And it includes all of the renovations and enhancements to the park.
Not all, yeah, not, not, not the whole parcel, but.
Doesn't include all the renovations as it states in this.
There's a some.
That's listed, yeah. I thought you meant in the plan, in the strategic plan. Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, the renovation enhancements include are also the little one at Little League. It identifies with the master plan, the, um, proposed scope, which is a prefabricated building. Which would have, um, ADA accessible restrooms, concession stands and a press box. Expansion of the public works and sewer service to the park. Accessibility improvements to the parking lot and spectator area, including the paving of the existing gravel and spectator area. The welcome surface, parking lot expansion to add five spaces, a bullpen for players to warm up. And the addition of lawn sweeping, landscaping enhanced throughout the park to provide additional. Are there any questions?
I'll just make a comment because after the, at our last meeting, there were some concerns about the level of, um, contribution that the Little League would be able to or willing to commit to this match. And Adams here from the Little League, um, if anybody has any questions, but I spoke with them and given their money in their reserves, the money they can raise from the signs and money that they hope that they can raise over the next year. Um, a goal of $50,000 to contribute is, sounds like it's reasonable. Can't guarantee that people are going to be that generous, but that seems like the range that they could set as a good goal. So hopefully, um, we can, you know, have this partnership for the match.
Except for from that, you're identifying that you will pay the matching dollars.
Of course.
Match commitment for this actual grant application. That can be an understatement. We have to decide, but as it relates to the local share, you know, application, we're going to pay it.
Of course, but do we put in the grant that we're going to have a partnership with the Little League or no?
Um, I can, actual grant application itself, I do.
Yeah, in the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, not in resolution.
Put a monetary amount on it.
Right. Yeah, to make it look, I'd hope it would make it more competitive.
Yeah, and they're going, um, we asked Little League to, um, also give a letter of support.
Okay. Great. That was the only thing I wanted to add. So everyone felt comfortable.
Any other questions from the board? Comments from the board?
Thank you for pursuing that, Jamie. Always good to have defined goal. I want to answer that.
Being that I'd like to make a motion to approve reservation 202327, the local share count grant application for Ingersoll. Mark is there second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the approval of a resolution updating our township agent for the Hurricane Ida team of grant. Essentially, you filed because it's a disaster relief in 2021 for damages that occurred. Um, i- if for, for us to be able to authorize the current township manager to execute the final document. And ultimately release the remaining 10% of the funding. We need to update that application to include the agent of community police and our now township manager. Once updated, staff will be able to file, do the final close out for DR46. Forty-six eighteen. So this is really kind of an administrative function that we need to do in order to be able to close out this grant. I'd like to make a motion. Well, are there any questions from the board? Any question from the public? I'd like to make that motion, um, to update our application agent for the Hurricane Ida VR4618 final payment. Meanie police and our township managers. There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is a review of our financials year to date and our balance sheet. Um, they were included within our board packet. Um, the items that, um, our finance director brought to our attention were also included in our board packet. Are there any questions or notes I made for the year to date?
No questions.
Questions on the board?
Um, I'm sorry. I just wanted to confirm that the balance, the ARPA funding, that doesn't include um, what we expect to use for the fencing for Ingersoll or, or does it?
That's how they.
What we have left to spend. Okay.
And, and does the staff have suggestions yet? Are we going to consider that since the deadline's coming up?
Yes, there in a, do you remember all the capital projects? So the, the fencing in, in Ingersoll, um, gosh, I, I've let that off all out of my head. There are several, the money is, most of the money is accounted for through 2024 capital projects. With a little bit of wiggle room because it, those are kind of high level estimates now. Um, so that we, we know, you know, come mid-year, we've got to make sure we have all the, the numbers figured out. So it's all contracted by the end of 2024.
I think we had like the document scanning, the bridge behind us, um, like.
It's the match, the match for the grant.
Those were like a couple of.
The Houston Creek, uh, flood projects that get started, that money would come out of ARPA.
Yeah, the, um, the stuff we did on the baseball field, um, the rescan, yeah, that, um, I think anything else.
This, so this balance also does not show, I think the bill for the Pen Ambler parking lot still has to come through. That's going to be paid for out of ARPA probably this year.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much, Molly. Appreciate it, friend. Next up, we have approval of the minutes, November 13th, 2023. The board supervisors held a town hall at Greenwich Bay. Um, everyone get a chance to review those minutes.
Yes.
Any questions to comment on that?
No.
I'd like to make a motion and, um, hopefully not to go over and abstain. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is our November 14th, 2023 public meeting. My first group of things. Has everyone gotten a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any questions to comment? Being that I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our November 14th, 2023 meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Put it in our board packet or supervisor liaison report. Are there any questions to comment on those reports? No? Very good. Tessie, supervisor commented.
Nothing. Um, well, uh, I'd like to thank Lori for her, uh, years of dedication to, uh, to volunteer and to make our community um, a better place to be. So thank you very much for that. and to make our community, um, a better place to be. So thank you very much for that.
I just echo what Tessie said. Thank you, Gloria, for all that you've done for the community.
So I'd like to just round it off and thank Gloria for all that she's done for our community. We are forever debt to your generosity. Like having an achievement or work that doesn't do justice to all that you've given, that I'd like to make a motion to adjourn if there's a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow. That guys.
Get that there.